Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey Chris, how are you?
Good, how's it going?
Good. You had a good week off, welcome back to the fray.
Yes, yes, we did quite a bit of hiking.
So good.
It was a very mind cleansing.
Good for you. Where'd you, where did you go to? If you don't mind me asking?
Yeah, we did, we did that day trips, we hiked to the top of Mount Wachusett. And then we were up in the Belgrade Lakes section of Maine one day. So.
This time of year.
Yeah, good weather. It wasn't, yeah, really good weather last week.
Yeah. Perfect week for it. Well, that's great. Morning Jim.
Welcome to everybody.
Thank you, you too.
And I, I just heard Chris had a good time, so. Left his troubles, left his troubles behind him and probably pulled a few muscles.
Just a few.
All right, let me finish my little exercise here.
Morning Tom, how are you?
Good morning folks.
Morning.
Morning everyone.
Hi Ezra.
Hi, just looking for a pad of paper right there. Got it. Hello Jesse, you changed your calendar.
No, same one.
No, it's. No, but now it says May. You didn't say that before.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Therefore changed.
I tracked the marching of tie of the sands of time by the old zooms of me from various hearings with the calendar in the background for the last two and a half years.
Is it backwards when you look at it though? In the camera?
Uh, no, is it backwards on your end?
No, but I thought that when you were on Zoom, it reversed your own image.
I think, no, it's forwards to me. I think maybe I got a setting on that reverses the image, so it doesn't look backwards.
We got everyone Jim or? Jim, you're on mute.
You're on mute Jim.
I don't know how I did that. All right, need to read the public notice. Alright, so. Notice of meeting Public Appeals Board Working Group Subcommittee, May 19th, 2022, 10:30. Consistent with the governor's orders extending the certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effect will be made to allow the public to view and to listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone, your computer. You may use the following dial-up number, 1-3-0-1-7-1-5-8-5-9-2. Meeting ID 8-2-4-8-2-2-4-7-3-5-4. Password 6-2-7-2-5-8. Please only use dial-in computer or, but not both as. Audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting is audio and visually recorded in compliance with the Americans Disability Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodation and/or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with disability and require information on materials on alternate format or if required any other accommodation, please contact Town Disability Coordinator, William Rinald. Town Engineer, 7-8-1-2-4-6-6-3-0-8. As far as an advanced as event as possible. Every effect will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable accommodations to remove any accessible barriers for you. That's it. And our agenda today is really to continue the massing discussion that we started. Last, at our last meeting about two weeks ago. And at that meeting, the object was basically to stay within the building. Profile basically in the form of how the building sits on the site. And how we might blend this building better into the neighborhood. And at the same time, explore options on this. And I think Chris has pulled together a drawing based on some comments that I had made and some ideas I had flipped out there for a starting point. So, and I know that in the meantime, Rebecca and I have had some conversation, if no other reason, to introduce each other to each other. And, and we had some brief conversations, which I'm going to leave aside for a moment. And let Chris basically go through what he's got, what he's pulled together. First off, before we get into sort of more parameter things, because based on the conversation I've had with Rebecca, their, their course is always an impact on whatever we do here. So, and this is not something that is unknown to us, because Chris brought it up at our last meeting. So with that, I guess, Chris, I've got to give you.
Permission to share?
Permission to share, yes. So I'm going to give you a co-host. So if you would bring up your stuff, please.
Okay, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, so we took a look. At some of the suggestions that were brought up at the last meeting and, and we, we've attempted to incorporate a so-called building shift. You can see that the building has shown here is divided into three segments. And the prior building was sort of straight across, went continuous front line of the building. What we tried to do is, is. Take a look at Jim's sketch and divide the building into three segments with Peter, Peter and Andrew's help. And we were able to slide this middle section of the building back five feet. And then this other section of the building here on the right to the east, another five feet. So this would, this last section here, the third section would have shifted back a total of 10 feet from the original, original line. This building shift also results in a shift of a parking field in the back. You can see how this parking field has changed in orientation slightly. It was parallel with the building previously. But by shifting each one of these sections of the buildings back, the, the parking lot had to shift so that this part of the parking lot is deeper into the site. And so that's why it looks like a funny angle. Normally, you know, we have a little bit more symmetry with the parking in the building and the site. But with a shift like this, we'll have a little bit of a different alignment for the parking lot. The other, the other thing that drove just how much we could shift these two segments is to me, one of the most important things on the property that we have to deal with, and that is the, the bordering vegetated wetland that borders us in the back of the site here. You can see it in this dash dot line here. We presented that information to the ZBA, you know, in our public hearing in front of the zoning board members almost every meeting now. And then most recently at our sub, last subcommittee meeting. What we did in preparing for this project is obviously we have professional wetland scientists on staff here. And, and you know, this was delineated by one of our wetland scientists located by survey. We're also planning on submitting a request to the CONCOM for an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation to nail down the limits of that wetland flagging. In this case, I think what, what we'll find, what the commission will see when we get out to the field is that it's a, it's a typical toe of slope wetland. Very well defined along the, along the bottom of the slope here of the property. So we looked back in history at some of the previous projects that were, that were approved in the vicinity. Particularly the project of 598 next door and the project at 600 North, North Ave, which are the two other apartment building projects. They also have. Activity relatively close to the wetland, which continues behind these properties. And try to come up with what we believe is a, is a setback that, that balances what we're trying to do with the interests of the Wetlands Protection Act. And it didn't vary too much from what was previously approved by projects next door. And so what we're proposing with this shift in the buildings is to maintain a 15-foot setback from the wetlands edge along the southeast, southwesterly portion of the project. And the way we're able to achieve that is with the use of a retaining wall. Nice thing about a retaining wall in this case is that it divides and separates the project clearly from the wetland resource. And it's a, it's a visual, you know, stay away line and, you know, helps limit and, and really to a great extent, limit future encroachment, you know, into this buffer zone between where we'd like to disturb the site and the wetland line. As we come around the north side of the building, we're able to increase that buffer to the wetland. And, and quickly get back to a 25-foot no disturb zone, which I think I've mentioned to the ZBA a few times. Jim, that the commission has a policy that they'd like to try to maintain a 25-foot setback to the wetland whenever possible. So that in a nutshell is what we've been able to do since the last time we got together. We have a shift back in this middle section of five feet, another five feet here and the parking lot shifting back. But we are limited as to how far back we can go with the use of this retaining wall if we want to maintain that 15-foot setback.
You all, you done with yours presentation?
Yes, yes, go right ahead.
All right, so. How close are you at the front of the building to the property line?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share another screen real quick, so we can take a look at that specific information. Let me go back here. Okay, is, can everyone see my screen now?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, so my screen sharing is paused. Let me just try to do that again. Try it one more time. Okay, resume share. Okay. See if it'll let me do that now. So for choices on sharing my screen, it says that it's paused, but there's a, a green arrow that tells me I can resume share when I click on it. Unfortunately, nothing happens. Let me, uh, we try clicking a couple of these other buttons. Hold on just a second here. Right. Back to the screen here. Hold on a second. All right, that should do it. Can everyone see that screen?
Yeah. Could you zoom in a little bit more?
Sure. Let me switch, this is the, this is the screen I wanted to share here. So can everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
So you can see here, Jim, this building is setback 13 and a half feet from a street line at this far end here. And you can see we're at 23.5, as I mentioned, 10 feet further back on this end of the building.
All right.
Normally, the, you know, the front setback for a project like this. If we look at the zoning table here, the front setback is 20 feet typically. And, and we're, you know, we're looking for a, for relief on that. That's one of the things that we've asked a waiver.
Do you have any idea without my looking it up, because I can, what the neighboring buildings are setback at?
Uh, let's take a look here if I can pull that up. All right, we can do it approximately. Using this aerial image that you see here. So from 598. Looks like. That building is about 11 and a half feet. And then you can see the building at 600 is a bit further back. That's closer to 23 feet, believe it or not. So the building at 598, about 11 and a half feet. Yep.
All right. Thank you. So then. Zoom back in on your plan. So the five foot set, this may be more of a question for Peter than you, but is this building still flipped? As was proposed at the last ZBA meeting where the jigs and jogs were moved to the back as opposed to the front?
Yes, you can see them here exaggerated on the left and the right. These are the bump outs, if you will.
If you, if you flip the, the ones on the right to the front, wouldn't that give you a lot more space in the back to move the parking lot away from the wetlands?
Well, as, as, or what, what I originally was trying to do. And. I may bring, I may be able to bring it up was to provide by, by basically stepping this back. And I was proposing 10 feet at the time. By originally pulling it, pulling each one of these sections back was to provide much more planting out front. And sort of mimic what happens on the site now, although the vegetation there is not in the greatest of shape, all right? And probably after 10 years or 15 years of growth, they end up breaking off and just becoming some of the debris in the, in the area. So my object by pulling this all back along that edge was to provide for more planting and therefore more disguising and more mimicking of what happens along the street. So it gave, so it gave a better blending of, of the neighborhood, basically to the original building. The two newer buildings, basically on the adjoining sites. So we're sort of like trying to transition this into the neighborhood. And that sort of thing, so.
And, and what is that space above the green line below the sidewalk? That's right of way or that's property?
Yep. So, so Ezra, you're talking about out here?
Yeah, like, like where, where it says S37, that's.
Sure. So, so the layout or the right of way of North Ave is quite wide at this location. It's 75 feet wide, but the traveled way is out on the other side of the layout. And so on our side of the layout, we have quite a bit of green space, if you will, in the right of way. From the edge of curb to our front property line, there's as much as 31 to 32 feet of, of green space in front here in the right of way.
So what you're, what you're showing a setback will actually, will actually be perceived as a much larger setback even.
To the, to the, to the, to the eye of the right beholder on the ground. That's right.
Thanks. And sorry to jump in. I'm just, I'm trying to catch up.
No, that's all right. So, and that, that line that says sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk is a continuation of a sidewalk that's supposed to be constructed at the previous two sites. But are somewhat under control of the DPW, I guess, because there's money or something set aside for that. So it's, it's all going to be that that side, that side of the street will actually get a sidewalk. So what we're showing, what Chris is showing here is the future sidewalk that will connect the front door to this. But as you are correct, the perceived eye, if we basically plant up this with trees and the like of some maturity, basically, that we can, we can mimic some of what's there today, but in a more healthy, healthier vegetation. And therefore, you know, buffer it because right across the street of the right-hand setback is the first residence, full residence. So, you know, we're, we're looking right at them and the concern on some of the residents close by is we don't want these people looking in our backyard. That's a comment made by some of the people so far. So we're trying to find, and that's why I've sort of stuck to massing and not to architecture, not to number units or anything like that. I want to just get this to where we think we've got a massing configuration, a layout configuration that would help mitigate the intensity of this. Now, the client has already taken one floor off, so we're at three floors, basically. Normally, my response to some of this, as you know, from Crescent would be to, to pitch the building down on either side. So it comes into the neighborhood. Well, in this particular case, your neighbors are of about the same height. Yeah. Including, including the building next door. But how do we pull, how do we basically pull it back to mitigate the appearance? So it's almost like we're pulling back towards the, what is it? The hall next door, basically.
The Knights of Columbus.
Yeah, Knights of Columbus. So, so we're pulling back to sort of pull towards that, pull back off the street. So we're not so, so connected.
Yeah. It looks like that, that brown house way on the right there is actually your best model of like, it's, it's almost sort of nestled in a little forest, right?
Yeah.
Right. Like, like if you're that far back and have actually really mature vegetation or even can save some of what's there.
I, I, I don't think there's any reason, my personal opinion, and maybe some others have a better opinion. My personal opinion and look into what the scrub is in there, that's really not worth saving. And it would be better off to put something that's going to live beyond a few more years. Basically, saving anything there.
Clean.
And, and as we all know from construction, basically a lot of stuff gets disturbed anyway. And we're just killing stuff, not that you can work around stuff that's like, like in that area. So that was, that was the direction I have been thinking about all along. So how do we, you know, how do we get this at this point? I'm disappointed that we can only push back five feet off this line, quite frankly. And I don't necessarily want this building, its leading edge to line up with the rest of the buildings on the street. I'd even be probably more for pushing that left-hand side even closer to the street, maybe. If I can get more break in the, in the three buildings. But that now leaves me, I guess, to Rebecca. Since we've seen this layout, Chris, can you go back to the, to your first drawing? Of the building?
How's that?
That's great. So in my conversation with Rebecca and, and the conversation that you've related, Chris, is there was the question as to what this area of the wetlands is classified as. And it could be an A or B. Rebecca's opinion, at least she shared with me, said it's an A in her mind. Which then sets us on a whole different path as, as you had related basically the other day as well, Chris. The also. I'll let her speak in a minute, but I'll just sort of relate to the conversation that we've had, which is then, you know, then a 25-foot setback from the wetlands to the project edge. And at the same time. What was I going to say? Something, I forget what it was. So that, you know, crowds us from the wetland side even more. And so I wonder whether there is a compromise that would help us here. And that, that, as I can see where you've got your wall, basically, it's not straight across the back of the parking. So there would be some areas, basically, that would give it more breadth between the edge of the wetlands and the edge of the project. As opposed to paralleling the wetlands, basically straighten some of this wall out, which would be less costly than doing all this zig and zagging. And at the same time, give more wetlands over, but there would be some neck down points, basically where you couldn't do more. I'm also wondering whether we can rotate this parking a little bit more, swinging it up more towards building, the building on the left. That would pull us back a little bit more. So I, I think I, in the one I showed, I was a little more radical in, in that they didn't keep the parking lot as, I, I disjointed this back parking lot a little bit to, to give it some space. And so I guess my thought here is I'm disappointed with this, it was as little setback as we've got between the buildings. But I'm wondering about the effects, if we can give COMCOM what they would like by changing this plan some, in some other way. So Rebecca, I guess I'm going to let it, let you speak since I'm, I should shut up for a moment, if you would.
Sure. Hi. Yeah, so I think that one of the differences between this site and the other ones, because I think it was mentioned that this was somewhat similar to the other ones, is this one is undeveloped, whereas the previous sites had homes on them and lawns that were sort of, they had removed and maintained much further back. So I think that in this, on this particular site where it is undeveloped and there's nothing there, I, I don't see why they would bend on their 25 no disturb zone. Typically, when they do bend on that, it's based on the fact that, that there's an existing use or there's an existing condition. Where that's not the case for this lot, I don't see where they would waiver on that 25 no disturb zone. I think also, did we discuss the Zone A situation? So if, if not, I'll just go do it real quick. But basically, the gist of it is they, the new regs that came out, which the other two projects did not have to adhere to because they, they changed it after those. did not have to adhere to because they, they changed it after those were already permitted and built. Um, is that they have now classified Lake Quanapowit as a zone A. And there is at the end of Lake Quanapowit, there is a pipe that if you follow it back connects to North Ave and then it goes to this stream here. You can see where it says head wall, enters into a pipe and then goes into Lake Quanapowit. Um, so that even though it's in a pipe, would still be considered a stream as it was originally a stream and then placed in the pipe. So I believe Bill Renaud went out and met with DEP the other day to inquire as to based on the fact that there's that connection through the pipe, um, via the stream, whether or not this area would be considered zone A as well. From what I understand, DEP said yes. So that would complicate the stormwater management issue. Um, for the standards, it says there's no stormwater discharges in a zone A. Um, so I'm not sure where that would leave you all.
Yep. So I can, uh, I've addressed, uh, the zoning board of appeals on, on, uh, on this matter. Because we recognized early on in our planning that, uh, in, in our investigations of where stormwater leaves our site and where it goes ultimately, that, um, that it does eventually end up down Willard, down, uh, Willard Street, which is across the street here and out to Lake Quanapowit. Uh, the zone A extends, um, uh, two hundred feet from the bank of Lake Quanapowit, uh, because Lake Quanapowit is considered a tributary uh, to, um, Hawks Pond, uh, the Sagus River and Hawks Pond, which is down in Lynnfield. And, um, and we thought that it might be possible that at some point in the future, DP might also map the stream that flows through this property. And then out the back, out the back here comes on to us in the southwest corner here, flows through this wetland and then out this pipe. Uh, we recognize that that might be a possibility and, um, and we designed our stormwater management system uh, so that it would comply with, um, the standards for a critical area, which is, uh, uh, discharges to an RW wetland, uh, would be considered a critical area. And you have to um, provide some additional treatment before infiltrating the water. Uh, you also have to treat, um, the first inch of runoff as opposed to the first half inch of runoff. Uh, but what we're proposing is, uh, the other thing that we did is we designed our stormwater management area so that it would be more than two hundred feet away from, uh, the, uh, the stream in our, in the prop that runs through the property here, which is the limit of the zone A. So our stormwater management area is struck, considered a structural BMP. Those are the things that are prohibited, uh, within a zone A in the handbook. Uh, so we purposely kept that guy over on this end of the property, more than two hundred feet away from, uh, from the stream. Uh, but the, we can certainly discharge water, uh, to an RW wetland. Uh, that's not prohibited. Uh, you can also discharge water, um, to a zone A. Uh, that's not prohibited, uh, but it is considered a critical area. You cannot have structural BMPs. Um, so we've, we've, we presumed that that might be the case. So we, uh, we designed around that when we first put the project together. Uh, but, um, as far as the twenty five foot setback though, uh, is concerned, in order to build the project, uh, the way we would like to build it, uh, we're going to be asking the commission to, um, to go closer than twenty five feet to the wetland when the time comes.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, um, I, from my opinion, and based on the decisions that they make, based on the fact that it's an undeveloped lot that they would say no. So let's go back for a sec. Can you draw the two hundred foot area on this, just so I can see where the zone A would end?
Um, yeah, I, I don't have that information, um, finalized, uh, but I can, I can bring it up on my, uh, on the CAD here for a minute. If, um, let me just.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Go back to the, uh, other screen here real quick. Let's see. So, uh, let me just, uh, go to our topographic plan here real quick. I'm going to switch screens, uh, to the previous design because it's a little bit easier to read on the topo for now. This is, uh, the non-shifted building that you're seeing here. And, uh, you can see the, the stormwater management, uh, area that we designed, this infiltration subsurface. You can see it's an odd shape. Uh, and it's kind of weird tucked in into this location here. Uh, but, um, let me, uh, do this. Uh, we have located. Let's see if I can find that real quick. We did, uh, uh, flag the bank of the stream, uh, Rebecca. And, um, I just haven't finalized the two hundred foot offset. Let me just, just go back up here to the, where the pipe is real quick.
And it works.
Yeah, I think these shots here, and I haven't, I haven't finalized it yet.
All right.
Uh, so I'm going to give you an approximate for now. Following the wetland line here, I think it's a little bit, a little bit further down, uh, because the stream then heads off into, into this direction here.
Right, okay.
So let me just offset this line real quick, two hundred feet. So. So there's the, the two hundred foot offset line.
All right, perfect.
Yeah, that's, it's approximate, you know, but we kept, you know, we kept this guy, you know, purposely outside, but just in case DP were to come back in the future and map this. And we, um, we forwarded Bruce Buck's information over to you and, and, um, Bill Renaud. And, um, and I did have a meeting, uh, uh, Rich Williams from our office met with, uh, Bill Renaud and Bruce Buck, uh, from DP. And they, and Bruce confirmed after looking at aerial maps at the meeting that they had at Town Hall. And then they visited the site that, um, I'm going to turn on the aerial here real quick, that the limit of the zone A, that DP is going to, um, add involves, um, the stream that heads back in, uh, in this direction. So here's the, here's the pipe.
Okay.
And then it comes back like this. And you can kind of see this dark line heading back in this direction, something like that.
All right. So the infiltration is outside of the zone A. Are those overflows that are in the zone A?
So these are, this is a, a closed, the closed piping system. Uh, so, uh, deep some catch basin to a drain manhole, um, to a drain manhole, deep some catch basin. And then this treatment device is, um, is located out, uh, outside of the zone A as well. It's a CBS device, uh,
Okay.
To get us to more than forty four percent TSS removal, um, which is required in a critical area. If this, if this were discharging to a RW and then our discharge or overflow from the underground infiltration system is this pipe here that has a level spreader out in the back here.
Yeah.
So, you know, outside of the, um, trying to keep as much outside of the zone A as possible. Relative to, you know, stormwater management.
Okay.
So. Zone, being that this is in zone A, being that it's a, so to speak, virgin, virgin area, virgin land. And is a two fifty, I mean, twenty five foot setback. Is that only, that's from the, the twenty five is from the wetlands and not from the stream? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have to tell you, Jim, now, you know, respectfully, and, and, um, and we very much respect the Wakefield Conservation Commission. Uh, uh, but the twenty five foot, um, setback policy that they have, uh, there's no, there's no local regulation. Um, it's just a policy. Um, so it's not enforceable. Uh, but the commission also can deny a project if, if they see fit. You know, if, 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 uh, it's a, it's a wish, it's a policy, it's not a regulation, uh, and, um, and it's not something that, um, that, that there's not a regulation that, that requires us to do that. But we're trying, we're trying, uh, to, to meet that to the, to the best of our ability.
And there's no way we just, no waiver being requested, right? Because nothing needed is.
I'll just make a comment on that though. So he's right. There is no strict regulation, um, nor is there a local bylaw on that. However, um, the reason why that exists is because as activities get closer to the wetland, they are more likely to have a negative impact. And we have found that by, um, requesting the twenty five foot no disturb, it's very easy for design purposes and it's easier for permitting purposes to stick with that. As a matter of fact, the regulations state, we could regulate all the way out to a hundred feet if we so desire or so believe that that activity, even at a hundred feet, would have a negative impact on the wetland. So the twenty five foot is used as its easiest for everybody. But the regulations do allow the commission to have a no disturb area for as wide as they deem necessary in order to ensure that there's no negative impact on the wetland. So they do do the policy. It is a policy and it is request, but it is also very easy for the commission to, uh, demonstrate how activities at fifteen feet, including complete, uh, canopy of removal would have a negative impact on the wetland. So it's really there to make it easier for everybody. Um, but once again, like I said, we can go, um, and go right to the regulations and then demonstrate how those alterations would likely have a negative impact with or without the twenty five no disturb. I hope that clarifies that.
Yeah, go, just going not to jump into a technical conversation with, uh, with the lawyer speak. But, you know, I think Jim said it well when we started out that we're looking for a plan that's a compromise between what the developer is trying to do, what the zoning board is trying to do in terms of reducing impacts to neighbors and what the commission's trying to do in terms of applying and enforcing the Wetlands Protection Act. Uh, going back to Jim's suggestion, Chris, of, of altering that rear retaining wall so that it, it picks up where the end of the parking field goes. Is that something that would be feasible to provide some more setback, uh, in that, that area of the site? So that we're minimizing the, the, uh, reach into the twenty five foot that the commission's looking to apply?
Uh, in short, yes. Um, you know, this is a, this was a quick concept plan that we put together and, um, and I, it was very easy for me to just do a fifteen foot offset. Uh, but clearly, as Jim pointed out, the parking lot doesn't quite follow the wetland line, obviously. And so we can certainly move the retaining wall, you know, as close as feasible to the edge of the parking lot, uh, to increase that buffer zone. Absolutely.
Well, I certainly would want to give the, this town basically as much of what they require, at least Commcom, what they require. Because I, you know, I, I agree with a lot of this, but I also am trying, I'm sort of trying to fit this into a context that will also have the visual or minimize the visual impact and placement, comp, placement on this project. And there are, uh, we haven't explored yet the architecture and the number of units and the depth of the building itself, uh, which is quite a bit deeper than, say, the fire end building, basically that's already in place. But I wanted basically really stick to the massing and the edge effect, which is where we are right now and what we might be able to do. Um, like I said earlier, I'm disappointed that we can only get five feet. On the other hand, if I sort of push the ten foot, which would mean another five feet, then I'm pushing closer to the wetland at the same time by pushing the parking area at the same time. So, uh, can you go back for a minute, Chris, to, um, your original plan?
Sure.
When I say original, I mean the one you came up, yeah, that one. Okay. So if we were to want to raise it a little bit or shrink it one or the other, I, I'm losing the bottom of the page. Okay. So if, if we were to push that wall back to, um, along the edge of the parking, do we have an idea how much, where we'd be for, um, um, distance off the wetland?
Uh, sure. Well, it, it'll vary. Um, you can see.
Yeah, I understand.
You can see that that's our pinch point. One of our pinch points is here. So the, the outside face of the wall is fifteen feet away. Um, so we're going to pick up a couple of feet. So it'll be as close as seventeen feet, but here will be more than twenty five, for example. And here will be close to twenty five feet along here.
And, and on the far side, on the left, I mean, that can be pulled and straightened back too. So we get more out of that, that area as well. So maybe it's, um, I don't know, we get thirty five percent or more, forty percent more, um, um, wetland separation if we start to manipulate the wall?
Yeah, we can certainly, um, increase the, the buffer to the wetland by, um, by moving the wall a little bit here and there.
Now, if we just, as far as massing and appendages on this building, if we look at this flipped image, we see that the, um, the far right basically has some impact in that, uh, the building projects itself quite a bit out that way and therefore pinches up against the, the parking area. Yeah. So if we were to take that knob off, or maybe the knob goes to the front, but then it goes against my thoughts that, against, uh, having more planting out front. If we were to look at the architecture and maybe the architecture on the building not, is not as grand and articulated basically as originally shown, where it gets a little more straightforward. And therefore, um, we can pull the parking back into the building more and, but still slip the buildings. And then the, then the, then the left hand far articulation on the left hand side, that knob comes off and can we, can we tilt the parking, uh, more like I had? Basically in my show and tell the last time, whether it be the whole parking area tilted or whether it be a portion of it, to again pull the retaining walls back. Maybe you can't get fifteen feet, but maybe you get twenty feet or something like that, uh, along that, along that edge. Something, something to compromise all the way around. I assume that, that, um, you and your client and Jesse basically are looking to sort of get some dispensation from Commcom, um, basically on what the setback is. On the same time, you've, you've got to give something back to them. Um, otherwise they're.
Yeah.
So Jim, if I can just ask the question, Jesse, why wouldn't you go to Commcom first?
So the, the, we, we normally would, if this was a non forty B, we normally would, we, we may have filed with them already. Technically, under the, uh, the Wetlands Protection Act regulations, we are not allowed to file with conservation for the notice of intent until we have a comp permit from the zoning board.
Which is, which we discussed in, in zoning in the first presentation. This whole thing, it was just like craziness to us.
Yeah.
That this wouldn't run in a parallel course, course, so they get feedback from both sides. Basically, and you know where people are coming from. You go and design this whole damn thing. And then you take the Commcom and they, they go thumbs down. So, you know, this is why Rebecca's sitting here basically to give advice.
And we really, we really appreciate that because without Rebecca, we'd be flying blind.
Yeah, we, we obviously have competing priorities here and um, I don't want to be in a position where we tie ConCon's hands to an up or down, you know? But see, I think part of, part of the solution is there's, you know, part of the solution when I look at this is in fact the varying the setback, but part of the solution exists within the building itself. And we're not talking about planning yet of the building layout, except in the form that it exists. And we, we may ask, how can we skinny this building up a little bit front to back? Um, to make it, make it work on the site and still separate it and split it. So we can get, or at least I can get what I want, which is more planting out front. So it's, it's a jigsaw puzzle, basically with, uh, competing elements at this point. And how do we, how do we work it?
Jim, not to, again, not to tread outside of my lane here. Um, what would you think about the left side of the building there, which has the projection at the rear left corner? What if that flipped so that the projection is towards the street? Which would, which would provide a, a more of a pronounced impression of the transition of the building from, from closer to the street to farther away from it in terms of, uh, providing relief to the neighbors over on the, uh, the right side of across the street there.
Well, there become, there comes a point where you're so close to the property line, the street, that you are the wall. All right. And, and. And and here we are trying to soften this. So that's why I look at that projection and say, you know, as much as I know what that architecture looks like to some degree. And agree with the the undulation basically. In it, a trick for architects basically is undulation basically breaks down the mass, all right? So I'm not, you know, and I on all the undulation on the back of this building. Basically, doesn't do anything for the birds, they can look at it and don't care. They'll still crap on the same thing, so the balcony is at the back anyway, so. The undulation probably needs to be near the front to break it up more. But there needs to be a bigger undulation in the splitting the building. So I get I I I'm all for move flipping it. I'm not, I'm, I I have a limit, I think, and I don't know what it is yet as to how close that building should be to the property line. Before it causes its little problems. So it's a balance where we put trees and soft stuff on one edge and the other side, you've got this hard edge. But that hard edge. Would be broken up by because it undulates, the architecture undulates, all right? And and one side of me says, maybe we should be simplifying this more. As far as the undulation on the other side, I on the other side of my brain, it says. Undulation is good because it breaks up the surface. And breaks up, you know, breaks it up, so it's not a straight line like the other buildings are, the other buildings are, even though they've got some undulation in them. There's still there's still formal wall when you when you look down the street.
Just to be sure we're exploring all the options at this early stage. There's that whole spot up on the upper left. Where you know, you have this, the buildings, you know. Narrowed in at the bottom, which makes sense, but. Is there any desire to move one of those nubs? I mean, I don't know how it affects the the architecture of all, but yeah, up there, I mean. You know, you could you could squeeze the buildings a lot thinner, top to bottom. You know, includes up even just a two story thing there, or I mean, you could, that seems like a really interesting place for some play. Jim, does that at all?
You know, I I it's interesting you bring that up because I I was looking at the landmass on that edge. And with a. Where the wetland edge is over there and saying, you know, that's. It lengthens the building on one hand. But if that in instead of a nub sitting out there, maybe it's it's not on the street edge, it's pulled back some. So maybe it's, I think it's thirteen feet setback right now from the property line. Maybe there's a nub basically that sits off the side of the building. It's like twenty or thirty feet back.
Like like almost like a shed kind of.
Yeah, yeah, something off the side. That's still within the twenty-five foot zone. And but not on the street, so you see it, obviously. But provides for some unit space of some sort or whatever, basically. And that's where we get into the architecture and how can we manipulate the footprint through the architecture? To to pull ourselves back as much as possible to give as much room in the back as possible.
Just a question if that really screws up the construction. You know.
Guys, what if we pulled the left side of the building in and matched it with the right, so the just the center is forward? Because there's plenty of room to do that, to pull that whole left. Rectangle back. Would maybe that would help, yes, pull that down that way. Then then we know, I already know that works inside because it's working on the right. Maybe that would help because it's going to increase this back on the left. And maybe it gives enough undulation to the building because this will be like a problem in the center.
I don't see your, the, I think the right hand building. Is the one that creates the choke point to some degree. But the right hand one is the one that has to be moved back the furthest to get some planting now. You could you could look at this in reverse and say, if I pull the left hand one back. Then I've got, I can create more of a forest there, right, planting on that side?
Yeah.
So can I, if I pull that back and create a forest in that area? And then have a smaller forest. Basically, on the right side. And push the the middle building out. It's an interesting thought that if we push it, the middle building out to where the left building is. More to the street, it's the front entry to the place, it's closer to the sidewalk. And I pull the edges back. To get the undulation I need, but at the same time. Bury those two right and left buildings as much of a much behind greenery as possible. That's a possibility, but it that works on the street. It's still not doing us much in the rear for the setback. From the wetlands.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Leave it on the site, Chris, don't put it in the street.
Something like that.
Yeah. Can we? There's a, there's another positive thing here, it gives some sort of courtyard at the back, I suppose.
What what did it do, Chris, on the upper left? What is that number now roughly?
So that's twenty-three, almost twenty-three and a half feet now, just the same as this.
Got you.
So Rebecca, question. Any sort of planting we do? Has to be twenty-five feet back as well?
Uh, no, not necessarily the planting. If they're going to do it by they're going to plant by hand, so you want to plant a bunch of like trees or whatever?
I I I'm thinking on the left hand side, we see where the wetland edge is. How close can we get with planting up to that wetland edge to to basically make that as dense as possible?
Sure, uh, no, you can plant right up there, um, they would probably request that at where native species as opposed to. You know, some type of ornamental that from from somewhere else, so I would say that's certainly very easy.
I'm I'm thinking more like elms and pine, you know, maybe some pine trees, some elms or. Or, you know, maples or whatever, something that's that's going to create more of a forest than, say, ground cover.
I think that would be a positive.
Okay.
So there's your, there's your twenty-five foot setback.
Yeah, but in it, okay.
Just for a visual.
So does the building penetrate that one little point there?
It does ever so slightly there.
Chris, if you were, if you were doing that, would would it be possible to build the building into the slope there and effectively use the building as the retaining wall?
Yeah, I mean, there are things like that that can be that can be done, yes.
The the problem with that is that the construction of that. Building edge. You'd end up basically working within the wetland setback. And disturbing it, so it's not so easy, yeah, if if you could instantaneously put a. Put a concrete wall there, great, but it's the construction process that's going to be the problem. And how much the COMCOM would allow you to get into that wetland to do that work and then have to repair it afterwards, I think would be the issue.
And and wouldn't they want to be able to access all the way around the building in some way, shape or form? Like you wouldn't want it to be cut off, so realistically, even if the edge were at twenty-five. You're going to disturb a little bit further. I don't know what the safety would be for that, but you would have a greater edge out, that makes sense, you'd want to be able to go all the way around. So you'd have to base it off of where that edge is. Not only just the building edge, but where the edge of the disturbance would be.
Yeah, I I would agree with you, it it would be something that. I think you'd want for not no other reason than maintenance, basically, otherwise you got to go around the whole building. You know, it's a long walk from one side to the other. Chris, the distance, I assume the distance from the front door to the property line is like the thirteen feet you were working with before?
Yes, that's it's about twelve right now.
Okay.
Can I ask a heretical question there? Does the front door really get you anything? Are we really imagining anybody's walking in that front door rather than? Just making the side door the front, I mean.
Well, the thought, I think the thought was Ezra, and I'll speak for them for the moment, I think. The thought was that everybody walks up and down the street on the other side, and the primarily reason they do that. Is because there's no sidewalks on the side, if sidewalks become existing on this side, and they do exist on the street, just not in this area. Is that people will come out that way. As opposed to going out the back or going out the side door. Into the parking area and maybe walk across the street, there's some discussion about whether there should be a crosswalk here to get to the other side. There's nothing. Great about walking on either side of of the street, quite frankly. The people like to walk along the far side of the lake where you're up against the water, you're not up against the water here. You you get at the head of the lake, you're walking along the the water's edge. So this is just a way to connect the rest of the lake, so it doesn't matter which side of the street you walk on, quite frankly.
Sure.
But but I think the the thought was that that front door. Is somewhat ceremonial, but at the same time actually will get some function out of it.
Well, that's cool. What was there a different version that actually had a? An internal walkway going over to the parking lot from there? And on the black and white one you had, did that have that?
Yes, yeah, the reason why there's a difference there, there was a sidewalk internally here.
That's the part I was wondering about, it's like. You know, either you're on the sidewalk or you're not, or. It just seemed like you lose a lot of planting by putting another walkway in there.
Yeah, no, I I I I wouldn't have supported that, but it's like everything else, it's in transition at this point. Someone someone on the board basically recommended. Basically, that the doorway go all the way out to the street and instead of going over to the parking lot, not out to the street.
That's right, that's why it's eliminated from this this version here, we continue to work on the plan.
Okay, so the the current thinking there was to not include that.
That's correct.
Think that if I remember correctly, that was a request at the TAC as well to shoot the sidewalk straight out to the to the street there.
I don't know what else we can do at the moment, I would. With the new information about the twenty-five, I think we should find out how much how much we can gain back. At a twenty-five and where we we neck down. And I would ask Peter, I guess. To look at how we might manipulate this. Articulation, whether we need it all. I guess I'm looking for flattening it a little bit, particularly in this configuration where we pull the two sides back and push the middle middle forward.
Especially in the back, no one's going to the back.
No, it isn't, and and as you look at this right now, it's actually become sort of a courtyard for the whole back end. Which could be pleasant or not, but but if if we can, if we can get rid of some of that articulation. And this may mean that we lose a some three bedroom units and the two bedroom units, I I don't know. And I'm not going to recommend it at that moment, but I'd like to see how. How we might be able to pull the parking lot forward into the building more. By getting rid of some of those appendages. But I still like the fact that the building setback and we got a grove of a potential grove of trees. Pulling this affecting basically the overall. Appearance on the street.
To keep in mind that with the three bedroom issue, we are required to have ten percent three bedrooms in this project, so that's that puts us at four three bedrooms and that's. A requirement of the subsidizing agency, it's not not our preference to have those, it's it's actually required.
Okay, well, then then it's going to affect the two bedrooms basically because the three bedroom basically come off of two bedroom or. Or one bedroom or whatever, basically, to get the mix you have to have. I I'm just saying that that we we probably have to nibble into the building in some fashion, basically. To make this work better. And pull as much away from the wetlands as possible. So that we only have a few neck down places. And get get most of the time get twenty-five, but then in some cases we won't. Or if if we eliminate a few units, then we're going to eliminate a few parking spaces and. Do we want to eliminate parking spaces because we have guests? Or do we want to eliminate parking spaces because we can? Meet the wetland requirements a little bit better. Nothing's perfect, so. I I guess I would ask that. Chris and Peter work a little bit to see what they can do to formulate. On the direction we're going right now, or at least looks like the possibility of a direction we're going to, because this was, this is an option I hadn't thought of, but it's enticing.
Right, well, that's that's helpful, I think we, I I think we have a sense of our marching orders from here. It's it's unfortunate as we've been talking about that we we can't file with conservation. And Rebecca can can tell us what she thinks that the commissioners will say about a project like this, but she's obviously. Not not committing them to take a position one way or the other, so I think we can. Sharpen our pencils and do what we can to to respect their twenty-five foot no disturb and and where we can't, we'll we'll try to make some. You know, some give backs with native species plantings, things like that. You know, and and take this plan as close as we can to what Rebecca thinks that the commission would approve and and. Do our best to get it approved, and if if they're not willing to, then go to DEP. But obviously, nobody wants to to do that. Chris, Peter, you guys feel good, good, you have your marching orders?
Yeah, we do, I mean, we've got, we've got some work to do, I know that we can pull that wall. You know, closer to the parking lot and and you know, we'll work. Together with Peter and Andrew to see what what else we can do to tighten that up.
Can we all, do we think we can do this next since we all gathered here on Thursday at ten thirty, can we do another one next Thursday at ten thirty?
I can't, I get, I have commencement.
I didn't think you were graduating.
Not, gotta be there.
Is it, is, okay.
I've got a ten AM that morning as well, Jim.
Okay, so can we, since everybody's online here? Can we settle on a day and time?
Yeah, Chris and and Peter, how how much lead time do you guys think you need to to anchor with this?
I need to get in there, Chris, and start to see where I can simplify the building, where I maybe can lose some some chunkiness in depth. Maybe there's some possibilities, but. I think I have, I need a few days of that before I can share back with Chris and say. I was able to, you know, pull this in, shrink that, and then I think then he'll begin his process. So let's say. Let's say we're like, I'd say we'd be like midweek next week. To get to start to get it back to Chris.
Then it sounds like you really can't make next week, I mean, not personal schedules aside. Timing to get the work done wouldn't put you into this. Next week at all.
Yeah, so so that would mean, you know, on or about June second, which would set us up nicely for the ZBA meeting the following week.
Well, I don't know that we'll be, I mean, if you're. I'm not thinking that we're even close to doing anything with the ZBA. So no matter where we are, basically, when we meet, is I don't see. So no matter where we are, basically, when we meet, um, is I don't see. We, I don't see that we're in a place to present to Z B A anything. You know, short of maybe a quick report that we're meeting. And we're, you know, working with this, basically, um. I, I, I just wouldn't bother. And I know that this next meeting is packed full. It's going. Until twelve o'clock at least. I'd be very surprised if it doesn't.
Right, that's the twenty-fifth. I'm talking about, uh, June eighth?
Well, the eighth is gonna be packed because things are gonna roll out of the twenty-fifth too. So I don't know what the eighth is gonna look like. I know I've got, I know, uh, Tarrant Lane's coming back in. Because it's got some minor modifications, but that shouldn't be a big deal, but all the other stuff that rolls out of there. And so, I mean, what would you think, Chris, you would do on the eighth?
I would hope that, uh, we'd have a footprint, um, you know, that we can, uh, that we feel good about, uh, that we can get, uh, you know, some feedback from, uh. Z B A that it's okay to continue with that footprint and our footprint is nailed down. And then, and then you guys can talk about architecture as much as you want.
Well, we won't be.
I mean, Jim, as, Jim, as you're thinking that, that this working group kinda has enough of a sense of what the Z B A is looking for, that if. We work out the footprint, we move ahead or, or do we need to go back to the Z B A to get their buy? In some ways, the whole point of having these working groups is to be able to move forward without.
Right, getting tangled with the rest of the group, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know, of course, they make the final decision as a, as a body, but, you know, but, but we need some ability to move ahead. Knowing, in general, they'll say, yeah, this looks right, but.
Well, just look at Crescent, basically. You had sixteen meetings, basically probably only reported at one or two of them.
Right.
Why did I expect this to go sixteen meetings? I hope the heck it doesn't.
But if they have a lot of faith in, in, you know, this process.
Tom, what do you think?
No, I, I, I think, I think we have a good sense of the board. I think the board was pretty unified on looking for a transition into the. Into the residential neighborhood. And by setting back, especially that right-hand part of the building and putting a lot of plantings out front to minimize. You know, the visual impact, um, I think that's it, that, that I thought, but we didn't anticipate the twenty-five feet. So that, that was a wrinkle for, that we just kinda heard. So, um. I thought we were on a path, uh, but we've been thrown a curveball. Um, we, as I said before, there's some competing priorities. We gotta work with the CONCON and, and their policies to the best we can. So.
And that's why I think this process works pretty well, um. Because it might not be, it's a question of when do we need to bring this, this Z B A, but, you know, when do we tie up the footprint and then move forward to that? The architecture or the?
Yeah.
Well, I, I looked at this, in my, in my minds, I, it was probably three meetings. We're in the second. Three meetings to get to a point where, in fact, we're not completely satisfied, but we're, we're on the, we're on a fixed path. That this is gonna come together, because then we're gonna branch out into the architecture. And the landscape and that sort of stuff, basically. And for, from Jesse's side, basically, is how much do you wanna push the twenty-five? Because you gotta go back to COMCOM eventually. Basically say, well, we can do twenty-five here and here. But these other areas, we're necking down a little bit to make this work and, you know, having that conversation, so. I, I think we gotta respect it as much as we can, but I'm not sure on the site, we can give it our all, short of basically. Um, making the building a lot smaller. So, uh, and that's also a possibility as well. So anyway, um. I saw three meetings of dealing with massing before we got this straightened out to a point where we're satisfied. If, if, if in fact on the, if we thought that something needed to be brought back on the eighth. Certainly Jesse could, you know, hold a place on the eighth. Basically where we could do that, but if we don't think that before the eighth, we've reached that point, then I wouldn't go to the board. And, and I'm not sure that I would even go to the board even then. Until we had more, or maybe we, maybe we need to deal with the landscape a little bit and talk about to them, so we can show a little more context. To the board, basically, as opposed to just where the blocks all line up. So, uh, I'm not, I'm not ready for going back to the board yet. Um, I think we just need, you know, Peter and Chris to basically study this more. Given all the facts that have been thrown out there at this point in the comments. And let's pull it together from there and meet. Now the question is, when can we all meet? I know that Rebecca is on duty on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we certainly don't wanna leave her out. I don't know what Ezra's schedule is. That's why I was sort of pushing for Thursday.
Yeah, pretty open.
Since Tom, since Tom wants to wear his cap and gown, be able to fit, flip the tassel from one side to the other, I guess we're screwed there. Unless, unless we would do it, I don't know, Tom, afternoon?
Yeah, I'm just saying ten-thirty couldn't work.
Okay, so what, what would work for you?
Later afternoon.
Rebecca, what's your schedule?
Next Thursday's tough. It's prom.
What prom?
I'm not going to the prom, but my daughter's going to the prom. Um, so later in the afternoon gets pretty challenging.
So, so, yeah, because you gotta, you gotta walk the route around the, the common.
Oh, actually, I don't live in Wakefield, but we have something very similar. Yeah, we have, uh, some of those things, but. May twenty-fourth is a Tuesday and then May twenty-sixth is a Thursday. I'm happy to do either one of those if that works for anyone.
So Jim, uh, I'm gonna need a few days after Peter gets me back his information, so. I'm like, we're not gonna be able to do this until the thirty-first of May or June second.
Those are both wide open for me, so.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense whether we're, you know, unless we can get everybody together and it sounds like Chris and, and Peter just need more lead time. Um, we're gonna be postponing the next Z B A meeting anyway, or at least maybe providing a, a quick update. So if we look at the second, and that day's wide open for me as well, may make the most sense.
I can do the second. I just can't do the ten-thirty timeframe. I have a lot of other flexibility. I can work up some meetings around, but the ten-thirty, that's something I can't move.
What's, um, what other times do you have on that day?
You wanted to do either, um, nine-thirty or eleven-thirty. I could do those.
Eleven-thirty would be better for me, if that's okay.
Rebecca?
Yep, that'll work.
Yep.
Eleven-thirty. On the second of a Tuesday. I mean, Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday, the second. Okay, that's what I'm gonna schedule.
Great. And then just throwing out one last thing, so, once we do get the footprint. I assume at, at that point, is the town gonna need to do peer review for stormwater, right by the police fire, all that sort of stuff?
My understanding is, um, is that the town engineer Ezra, Bill Renault usually reviews, um, the stormwater design.
Got it, okay. So we'll, so at that point, though, we'll trigger all that stuff. Once the building's not moving, the parking lot's set. Okay.
And, and they've already, they've already had some discussion with T A C, so.
Right, I know about that, so.
That's, uh, that's not on our, that's not really in our venue, but it's, uh, it's an apparel path, basically.
Yeah, that's the key, is to have things in parallel rather, that, you know, once we. Some of it needs to wait for this piece, but then we need to, just to, given the timeframe, we need to have a few of them going, so, okay. Um, great, thanks.
Chris, did you, did you already get preliminary comments back from Bill Renault about the stormwater? Uh, I seem to remember he sent in a letter.
Yeah, he did. And, um, at that time, he was, um, he wasn't sure about the status of, uh, whether or not this, uh, thing was gonna be considered a tributary. Uh, I don't think he's reviewed the stormwater report in detail because, um, you know, in there, we, we talk about, uh, that we designed it to be, uh. You know, designed for a critical area and that sort of thing, that we're meeting this, meeting those standards. I have a funny feeling he hasn't had a chance to review it completely. And that's good, because, um, you know, we're gonna be changing it a little bit.
Looked at my own schedule. I had everybody else lined up. I was wondering whether I had the time. Okay, so that's it. Thank you all. We'll see you on the second.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.